Be patient if you help me join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank everyone for the patience. We have an agenda with no changes. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Do we have Commissioner Gibbon on the phone? We have Commissioner Gibbon.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda items. Any changes or I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
I so moved.
Second. Any comment on those? Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Our first regular business is discussion regarding court appointments.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I am Rachel Rasmussen. As you folks up here at least know, I am the circuit court judge stationed here in Lincoln County. I scheduled in a time to be in front of you this morning regarding court appointment updates. Unbeknownst to me at that time, Mr. Stewart was before you last week. So many of the things that you will hear are probably repetitive, but they're from a court perspective nevertheless. This also will give you a little bit of an update on other court filings as well, such as civil, family, guardianship, items like that. So just in the basic background, as everybody knows, the court's required to appoint counsel to any indigent defendants. That's STCL 23A 46. This does include, as you know, probation violations, misdemeanors, felony court appointments. And the numbers that you'll get here are numbers from the UJS perspective. So from our point of view, it's our case filing numbers. And as we go through these numbers, the important thing to remember too is our numbers are one case number is one case. If someone comes back on a probation violation once, twice, three times, that's still one case as far as the numbers you're going to see here. However, each time they come back, they're still entitled to court-appointed counsel. So that may be one case for us, but it may be two cases or three cases for someone appointed on an, under an indigent defendant contract. So we have our requirements to appoint counsel, and obviously you have yours as well. In doing so, statutes allowed you to have court-appointed counsel for indigent defendants, any one of those three ways that are up on the board there. You can either establish and maintain a public defender's office. Two would be arrange with the courts in the county to appoint attorneys on an equitable basis through a systemic coordinated plan. So that would be something where we would work together. Number three is what Lincoln County currently does, contracting with any attorney licensed to practice law in the area. So you do number three currently, or we do, contracting with an attorney who's licensed to practice in the area. So it's important to note too that this isn't a presentation to get the courts involved in the court appointment process. That is, under your province, you have chosen to do option number three rather than two, and that's what that first bullet point elaborates, is that this is not in, the court trying to get involved in the court appointment process. So I wanted to be clear on that as well. However, regardless of which one of those items the county chooses to use, the courts still are obviously required to fulfill our statutory obligation as well. So that's why we're here to just inform and update the county about some concerns that we currently have regarding our current numbers and court-appointed counsel. So just as a general overview, as we've been saying in front of you now for a while, court case filings have continued to increase when compared to this time last year. Those give about the four main areas of year-to-date filings through May 31 of 2022 and May 31 of 2023. As you can see, civil case filings have gone up well over 100. Family, probate, mental illness, guardianship, that includes trusts as well, those have remained roughly the same. However, the criminal case filings have obviously taken the largest jump when compared to case filings from last time of this year. With all of those filings, that obviously affects the number of court-appointed attorneys that we need to cover those cases. In breaking that down a little bit further, those detailed criminal case filings from 2022 to 2023, year-to-date as of May 31, circuit court cases have increased from 526 to 616. Magistrate or misdemeanors, 243 up to 355. POAs, those are the tickets or citations, 1,578 to 2,046, and the juvenile from 101 to 140. The, again, the number of cases here is just that, just the number of cases for us. So while that shows that the misdemeanor or circuit court case numbers have increased from 526 to 616, in theory, on a court-appointed attorney, and that may be one and a half times that. If 50% of those people come back on a probation violation, one times, two times, and the like. So that's where I wanted to make sure to point that difference out in numbers. So when you put that into percentages from the UJS perspective, circuit court filings, felony filings in the circuit court are up 17% from this time last year. Magistrate court filings are up 46% from this time last year. POA tickets, 30%, juveniles are up 58%. So that, based on the number of cases in each category and those percentages, the overall increase in filings is roughly 29%. I have starred those top two numbers as those are the two that are eligible for court appointments under that first statute that I mentioned. So the increase in case filings leads to an obvious increase in cases where the court and county are still obligated to provide court-appointed counsel for indigent defendants. As you know, from Mr. Stewart, last week, the current contract for court-appointed counsel is capped at 500 misdemeanors and 525 felony cases. Those 500 misdemeanors, when I wrote this, I believe they were divided by two attorneys. There may just be one currently who's been taking those, so please note that. The 525 felony cases are divided between three attorneys. Current number of court appointments made under the contact, this is from Mr. Stewart, is 320 misdemeanor and 227 felony appointments through May 31 of 2023. The current trend is what is concerning, as the approximate number of necessary court appointments from the UJS perspective for 2023 will be 841 misdemeanor and 597 felony appointments. So the felony appointments will still exceed the number, maybe not by a great amount, but we still will have to address those extra felony cases. It's the misdemeanor cases that are obviously the most alarming at this point in time. So this, again, is just a brief overview, and I should let you know too why we bring this to your attention. So we receive requests for court-appointed counsel for indigent clients on a daily basis. Each day, if a defendant is brought into custody on a new warrant, on new charges, I see them. I usually do that at 11:30. Sometimes there are two defendants, sometimes there are six defendants. But that's the time where we have a sheriff's deputy go up to the Minnehaw County Jail. We have a Zoom session at 11:30, and I see them, advise them of their rights, the charges against them, why they're there. We set their next court date, address bond, and also it's their opportunity to fill out an application for court-appointed counsel. The deputies have those up at the jail. They have the defendants fill those applications out and then scan them electronically to me so that I can address them during the hearing. So each day when I get those and look at the applications, and the vast, vast majority of people do apply for counsel, the vast majority also qualify financially for counsel, I'm appointing the public defender's office at that point. So at that point is when public defender's now on board. It's now their case. So what's concerning for us is that at the rate, current rate of the case filings, I will run out of court-appointed counsel by August of 2023 for misdemeanors, and at least by mid-December, if not as early as mid-November in 2023 for felonies. I can appoint private attorneys if there are conflicts, such as two people in a vehicle get in trouble and they each need an attorney. They need a different attorney to represent each of their interests. So I do appoint out-of-contract attorneys for those conflict cases. But this is a large enough number that there are not enough private attorneys to be able to absorb this number of court appointments. It is, we try to be careful with appointing out-of-contract attorneys, knowing that most of them do have to drive here from Sioux Falls, for example. It takes more time out of their day. We try to schedule them so that their cases are together and be more compatible with that. We do not have a large number of attorneys on our court-appointed counsel list anymore. Certainly not enough to absorb this number of appointments, and they all have their own private practices as well. So it's not something where I can just come and say, hi, can you take 200 misdemeanors? That would completely ruin a private practice that someone has in place. So the numbers are increasing. The numbers of court appointments are obviously increasing. And this was something that we wanted to bring to your attention because we want to be proactive about it. It does take time. If the county is going to go forward and figure something out, in essence, we have six to eight weeks until the court needs to start appointing somebody other than the public defender's office on misdemeanors because they will be capped out. And that's not a lot of time to talk with other individuals and possibly get another plan in place. So again, I didn't know that Mr. Stewart would be here giving you these numbers last week, but at least from a court perspective, you also understand that we need this in place, and we need it in place basically every day, and for sure within the next couple of months, so that we do have, have somebody to appoint for the defendants who do qualify for indigent counsel. In doing that, again, court's not trying to get involved in the county's business of appointing people or contracting with people, but do want to bring it to your attention as far as our somewhat immediate need to get something rolling for a plan in place. That's all I had. I'm not asking for any action by any means, just a discussion to bring it to your attention and sort of our timeframe and what we're looking at and why it's imperative from the court's perspective. So any questions would be fine.
Judge?
Yes.
What do we, when you find someone that is not covered by the state's attorney or a conflict of interest, what determines that wage that we give to that defense individual that's providing for the indigent? Is that a set rate?
It is. It's a set rate.
By the state?
The same rate, correct. The same rate is set for anyone under Dave Stewart's group, under the public defender group that you contact with. Same rate as if I would appoint somebody out of contract in Sioux Falls to take a conflict case. They all have the same rate.
So if, if you, not painting a scenario of not having private practice individuals that really want to be engaged in this because they have their own, what resources do you have? Can you go beyond that state rate if you need these people? I mean, if you got a whole backlog of individuals, what do they do? Just sit in waiting until that caseload allows our state, our public defender to absorb them into their, you know, their routine or something?
We would not be able to do that because at this rate, when our public defender contract could absorb them would be next year. So we, we can't have people just push pause on their cases for four, five, six months until we get next year's contract, which is going to bring its own numbers in right away in January. So then we get too far behind the ball.
So what do these people do if we can't provide that indigent defense for them?
With all due respect, you have to.
Okay.
Otherwise, I, we don't have anything to do. You know, I can appoint private attorneys, but again, there are no private attorneys that have the ability to take on this number of cases without sufficiently doing their own business planning on their other side.
And we have six to eight weeks to come up with a plan.
Based on both my estimation and then from what I heard from Mr. Stewart last week on his estimation as well. That's correct.
Mr. Stewart, I see is walking, walking the door, so we'll ask him what his plan is.
I thought he was hiding.
He's waiting for the judge to get up to the courtroom.
Quick question if you're on, or do these numbers mirror our counterparts in the circuit to, to the north? Do you know?
Our numbers are actually increasing at a higher rate than those to the north. In Minnehaw County, again, they have obviously a public defender's office, and then they also have an office of public advocates, which is a secondary office that takes a number of their conflict cases, as well as if the public defender's office, for example, has one parent on an abuse and neglect case, OPA, or the Office of Public Advocates, would take the other parent. So they have two offices built in, one the main and one the conflict.
I was just curious if the case number filings are increasing the same.
They're increasing up there, but nothing like here.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience that has a question? Otherwise, we'll thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to come and bring it to your attention.
Sobering facts, yes.
They always seem to be, don't they?
Oh, Judge, can I ask you one question?
Yes, of course.
Just based upon your experience here, what does the main driver of the increase seem to be? Is it drug and alcohol-related crime, or, I mean, is there any one or two areas you can put your finger on? I like to ask that question. Every time our state's attorney comes up, every time Judge Howman comes up, I like to ask that question so we can keep it in the forefront of people's minds about what's going on.
Right. I could probably just answer it by saying yes. All areas are obviously increasing. You saw that civil, juvenile, misdemeanor outpacing felony increases this year. The number of cases is increasing. I guess what stands out to me in the last year to two years that I've been down here is the increase in violent crime. Oftentimes, that is correlated to drug or alcohol use, but the number of property crimes and violent crimes seems to have really escalated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One final question, if I may. Do you track whether the, the individuals are residents of the county or outside of the county? Is that a statistic that you track?
I don't believe so. I can double-check with court administration and see if they know. I think the only way that we could track that would be on their public defender applications. And often those applications say homeless, or they say a location where, quite honestly, that defendant may be right now, but may be someplace else by next week. So that's, that's hard to nail down as well. But I'll follow up, and if I have an answer, I'll certainly get it to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, and that will be the time and place for a public hearing for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license. I think you're up.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation. They are planning a tractor pull on July 2 at 1:00 PM at the fairgrounds. Last year was the first year that they did it and was successful. It'll be at the same location on the grounds as last year. They plan to do concessions again. If you approve the liquor license, they will have a separate location from concessions to sell the alcohol. Adults only will work that portion, and an adult will be looking at the IDs, giving a wristband, and selling the tickets to get drinks. And when they go to get their drinks, they'll have to show their wristband when they turn the ticket. So, and the foundation does have insurance.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval on granting a temporary on-sale malt beverage license to the Foch Foundation.
Are there any opponents?
I'll add, I'll take the motion. I'll take the motion and open it up for public.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, correct? Approve the application. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this application? Hearing none. I'll ask Sherry to call a roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Takes us to the hearing on the medical cannabis license. Bill, is that you? Yep.
It is.
Thank you.
This is a actual notice for hearing for administrative process under 126. We haven't done this before. This is where the commission actually sits as a quasi-judicial body in order to make a determination whether or not somebody has violated our ordinance to the point that there's going to be some action on their medical marijuana license. In this case, we have an individual who did not pay the second half of the licensing fee that was due in March 1. That, and they went ahead and contacted our office today and said they didn't think they had enough time and notice in order to get here. And so I am going to ask for this to be tabled at the moment and moved to the next meeting to allow them sufficient time to go ahead and obtain counsel and to actually appear and address the board with it. So that's my request at the moment for this one.
Just for the public record, the reason for this is a failure to meet the payment. Okay.
Yes.
Second portion payment. All right.
I'll move to table to the next meeting.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second by a rate. Okay. Commissioner Gibbon, thank you. Any member of the audience like to speak on tabling? Hearing none. Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you, Bill. Number four, we have an on-the-agenda eminent domain resolution. Again, Bill, you have a comment on that?
Yes. The resolution on this one, I've been contacted with by the landowners, and they've requested that we meet with them again and communicate with them before moving forward.
Excellent.
So I'm asking for this to be tabled as well.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any comments from the audience concerning tabling this action? Okay.
Good morning. Carla Lemms, 47980-281st Street, Canton, South Dakota. This, this agenda item came to my attention yesterday, and it's my understanding that the McKennys also were given no notice that a discussion of eminent domain of their property would be on the agenda today. So, you know, I also understand that the McKennys have met with the county and expressed willingness to continue negotiations. And, you know, I suppose you guys also have read in the press, like I have recently, that Brookings County jury awarded a property owner a substantial amount of cash settlement for land that was taken by eminent domain. And I also understand that that lawyer who represented the property owners in that case has been secured by the county, Lincoln County, to represent a case regarding eminent domain. So, you know, I would guess before that vote should go forward on, on something like this, it would be good to revisit this, and I know the landowners have a willingness to sit down and, and visit with the county again. And I think all of us see the importance of all of those avenues being exhausted before eminent, eminent domain is talked about. So finally, I respectfully request that this would be tabled today to allow for more discussion between the McKennys and the county. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Good morning. Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I'm just aghast that we've got to this point. I mean, I don't know if you've noticed the signs around the county about fighting in a domain with the pipeline, and here we're leading the pack. I'm, I just, it baffles me. I don't know how much time was spent in negotiation with the McKennys, but apparently not anywhere close to enough. During the May 2 meeting, Todd Orr from Tegra stated that there was adequate, or they had the ability to provide public as well as secure entrance to the new courthouse from West Avenue or West Street. So why are we going after this property? I mean, I don't think, my understanding is the McKennys were never made aware that their piece of property was even part of this courthouse venture. There was two 20-acre lots bought, and then when Tegra presented this thing, this 10-acre lot is in green, and as far as I know, the McKennys had never been talked to at that point. How do we get, how are we so short-sighted that we wouldn't include the McKennys in this long before we ever got to this point? You know, I don't want to take away from the committees that have fought so hard on this because I know there's been a lot of work put into it. But it seems like we're missing one of the biggest issues with this courthouse. There's going to be traffic. That should have been one of the first items we talked about. I know originally they talked about having this out on land owned by Darcy Johnson, which would have had access right from the highway. So then we buy 40 acres that's off the highway, and all of a sudden, after we get this plan all put together, we decide, whoa, wait a minute, there's, we don't have enough road to get there. That should have been the first thing we talked about. Another thing that kind of baffles me, we own 65 acres of land, approximately a mile west of city limits, where the county building is. We got an additional 40 acres that isn't being used. Why aren't we building there? It just baffles me that we'll, that we don't have enough respect for our own citizens to negotiate a fair price and that we go to eminent domain. I mean, are we, are we trying to tell carbon, or summit coverage solutions that it's okay to use eminent domain in this county? Is that, is that our message we're sending? If it is, we're making a bad mistake because eminent domain should not be used under any circumstances. I just am baffled at this. And, you know, I want to know how many attorneys you got on staff here? Has anybody got an answer to that? Bill?
You can make comments. I don't know that you'll get an answer.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But I, I find it hard that we don't have enough attorneys to represent. We have to go hire this high-flute and outfit that, I'm a little baffled about that. The amount of dollars we're going to spend on that attorney, wouldn't we, couldn't we apply that to the property we're going to try to seize? I mean, improve their offer? I don't know. I'm just, I'm shocked. I mean, and, you know, during this meeting on May 2, one of the members of the committee got up and stated that they were concerned about the traffic along West Avenue, and then he encouraged the committee to look at taking the land to the McKennys. And I was like, what in the world? And then during that same session at Public Comment, he got up and run the idea of eminent domain to the county. Same outfit. I mean, the people that are representing to build this courthouse are the ones presenting the idea of eminent domain. There's something wrong, and I think we need to take a good, hard look at what's going on in this county. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none. Well, Sherry, please call the roll on tabling.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. You're just getting repetitive here. Keep going, so.
And it's also a theme here. So wanted to bring to, this is a Supreme Court decision that came down concerning Minnesota and Hennepin exactly. The facts of it was there was a condominium, and there, they didn't pay the tax on it for years. The Hennepin went ahead and executed on a tax deed and took the property. There was an excess on the condo when they sold it of $25,000. And the owner of the property claimed the $25,000, which was above the taxes, the interest, and the penalties. The US Supreme Court has said that that constitutes a takings. So that when we take property in South Dakota, we have to wait three years before we take a tax deed for people who do not pay on their taxes. The process that we use is administrative process, so we contact the property owner. We try to work with them in order to get a plan in place in order for them to get their taxes paid up. We notify all of the creditors. This usually takes them place six months to. This usually takes them place six months to a year to actually accomplish. At the end of it, once everybody has noticed, there's 60 days, they have to redeem the property. At that point in time, we can do a sheriff's sale. There's also an opportunity for that property owner to come to the commission and ask for that property to be, in essence, given back to them and that as long as the taxes are paid and the interest. And we've worked plans out on that. However, in this case, we really don't have any statutory authority or anything else to comply with the Supreme Court decision, which is for excess payments. Because previously, if property was sold, there was an excess. That was divided up between the county, the city and the schools. But with this new decision, that will no longer have to take place. If there's an excess amount, it'll have to go back to a property owner. And so there may need to be some legislation in order to make arrangements for this because a lot of times we have estates, we have people who have left the community or no longer is around and we wind up with property that, and then there's no timeframe on it for how long we hold it. So there's all these issues that have now arisen because of this Supreme Court decision. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Do we currently, do we currently keep the surplusage and just?
It goes, gets paid out.
When we do a tax deed, any money that we collect on the tax deed gets a portion to the entities that it sits in based on this year's or the current year's levy?
So what we need to do from now on, I read the decision. It's pretty straightforward. So we just need to keep that money in escrow until the legislature acts. I mean, we, aren't we putting the county in jeopardy here of?
I can give you options. I can't give you a solution.
Right.
So escrow.
In other words, there's more to come.
There's going to have to be something that's going to be decided. It may be an ordinance on the, a part of the county that we put together a process for, you know, we keep it in escrow, we sell it or we do the excess and we return it to the property owners. But we may have to have legislative authority to do that. At times, we may have to turn it back to the state to their lost funds account. But I think it's a legislative decision, probably should take a look at that and give us a process in order to handle it.
Well, Bill, I kind of liken this situation here to the same thing as the political sign situation where this ruling comes down from the Supreme Court. It, on its face, it conflicts with our ordinance. I still don't know why planning and zoning hasn't taken that issue up. I hope they do. But I think it's kind of a cautionary tale here where when we get these rulings, we've got to get on the stick and get on top of it.
Yes. It's, tax deeds are complicated enough as it is. We could use some clarification.
Thank you.
So, Bill, this will take state, the state legislature to clarify this for us?
That would be the cleanest and the preferred route. Then it's a simple, then we have a process that we can look to the statutes and say, this is what we should do. Otherwise, we're going to be doing workarounds and workarounds are always subject to court reviews. And while we can guess at what the answer may be, it's always a gray. You just never know what facts you come up and how it's going to get interpreted.
How many of these cases have we had or do we currently have?
We'll start with someplace, probably a maximum of maybe a dozen. Most of the times, once we start the process, people will come in and work with us, we'll get them caught up on their taxes. And so it goes down to a small amount. There are some that I don't know the answer to, but we wind up with a lot of drainage ponds that they will be part of a development. They will intentionally not pay their taxes so they come off the rolls and then we wind up with a drainage pond. And of course, trying to get rid of a drainage pond is, nobody wants it, nobody wants you to get rid of it because if somebody does something with it, then it causes problems for the development.
Have we closed the drainage pond loophole though now?
I believe they've addressed it, so it has to go to a road district or it has to go to homeowners association or something at those points. But there are small pieces of property that we wind up with that at the moment have no value. Nobody wants them. They wind up in the county's hand, but at some point in time, they may become valuable.
We've closed loophole on rural areas, but municipalities still have their own jurisdiction on those detention areas that we can, one municipality is willing to take them for the most part. The other ones are definitely not interested in doing so inside the municipality and it will be a headache somewhere down the road for somebody, so.
Anything else? Anybody from the audience have any comment or question? Thank you, Bill. We're going to have a little work session, Madam Auditor. I think that's you.
Here's the front books.
Thank you.
I don't have the wages in here because we haven't set what we're going to be with them. But in my example, I did use, for the budget overview that I have, I did use a 3% wage increase and a 2.5% step so that I could have the numbers.
It is in here.
It's not in those because that would be putting it into the system and I wasn't going to put it in to take it out, but I did put it in my presentation here.
Okay.
All right. So our timeline for the budget, again, we're looking, today we're presenting all the information we have until July 15th to decide whether we would need to do an opt out or not. September 5th, I'd like to have the public hearing for the county budget and have the final adoption of the county budget by September 26th. With the numbers that I put together, the general fund request for this year would be $27,459,832, just about a million over what it was, a little less than a million over what it was last year. This is the change in our general cash fund and it's as of the end of May 2023. So you'll see that we haven't, much like 18 and 19, we have not dipped into our cash. And the chart showing our general budgeted expenses compared to our actual, it obviously link will go through 2022 since we're not in, or since we're currently in 23. But you'll see that our, we continue to do the same thing. We're over budgeting expenses and under budgeting revenue. I think we're trying to get better as always. And you'll notice that the one revenue change, you know, we had the $10 million in revenue that we brought in because of the ARPA funds so that helped push us over there. And the general fund revenues for the 2024 budget, I'm looking at about $20,566,274. That's if everything is the way that it's been budgeted, we'll end up with a shortfall of about $7 million of cash applied. Again, when you go back to this, you can see that we haven't had the shortfall of cash applied yet. Our taxes are currently budgeted to go up to $16,623,436. That's an increase from last year. We had about 4.92% projected growth with the 3% CPI. So we had an increase of taxes of 1.2 million. License and permits, the permits for medical cannabis have helped that increase over the last couple of years. Otherwise, they've been pretty solid. The building permits and talking with Toby, that might be, they put all their money into building permits. So there's, that's not all building permits that's in there. They apparently, they put their floodplain money, all permits, any money that the planning and zoning gets goes under there. So I'm probably going to be changing the title of that or differentiating their cash flow on that because I think saying that the building permits are 252 is probably close, but it's not completely accurate. Intergovernmental revenue, most of these numbers I've just taken as revenues as I've done over the last couple of years, I've just taken an average over the last three years and increased it. I think it's getting closer to what our revenues actually are compared to just trying to shoot from the hip. But the charges for goods and services, that's all the different departments and where they get their funds. It looks like for goods and services, we've got about $3 million in proposed revenue. Fines and forfeitures, we had consistently been budgeting like 77%, but I look back over the last three years and it looks like as of 22, it started creeping up a little bit. So I'm still debating on whether I want to push that number up that high. It works out when you do the three-year average, but I don't, you know, I'm not secure with that number really. Miscellaneous revenue, we've been doing some things with the public surplus auction for the vehicles and whatnot that we're selling. I think we're seeing a good return on doing that option. So we might see that go up. We also have got our interest income, just last month was $185,000. I think that was more than it was all last year. So I think we're looking at different ways to get our interest income to get more bang for our buck on that. Hopefully that's going to work out and we'll see the difference in there. So the number I budgeted in there, of course, that's probably going to be short. Of course, if the interest rates tank, it's probably going to be more accurate. So there are general fund expenditures, again, about $27,459. You can see the different departments and where they're looking at. Overall, if you look in the front of the books that I gave you, overall, I don't think any department, with exception of the commissioner's budget because they added a new staff member, there hasn't been a huge increase in budgets for expenditures. You can see, I think it's either the first or second spreadsheet in your book. And I can make that public as well, once it's not a working document. And then here's our preliminary means of financing. And that's just basically the overview of the budget.
Sherri, I got a question.
I knew you would.
Probably the, the most, this probably creates the most confusion and consternation and debate is this cash applied number. And, you know, I think it gets sometimes referred to as a shortfall and initially it is, but then on the back end, the county kind of recovers the money. But I'm still, after doing this for like five years now, I'm still unsure of, is there still, are we losing ground? Is there a fiscal cliff about to happen? If so, where, when does it happen?
I would, I would say no because the cash, the overview that I showed you, the, when we're looking at this and we're talking about the cash applied, it's just for budgeting. It's if everything in the budget happens the way it's supposed to happen, that's what we'd have to come up with the cash shortfall. So has that happened? On this here, you could see that we haven't had a cash shortfall since 2018 and 18, which means we've been over budgeting our expenditures and under budgeting our revenue. We haven't gotten, we haven't got that magic place where we've got them closer together. I think in typical budgeting, that's how you normally do to your budget. And I think everybody is working really hard. You know, we've done some changes in our budgeting for overtime so we can track overtime in the departments that get it so they're more aware. I think people are becoming more aware of what their budget numbers are actually reflecting. And you can see that when you look at that spreadsheet in there that shows that there hasn't been a significant change and that is even with the wages included in it.
Yeah. And I think once our new county commission assistant comes on board, he'll be able to kind of wrangle all of that together. I hope he's able to.
I'm looking forward to working with him on it.
Yeah. Where he can start to do fiscal analysis and start to bring these two numbers closer together. So we get a better number. Because the biggest thing I'm concerned about is when we have such wild gaps between budgeted and actual, that takes money away from actual projects that could have been done that year. But we can't because we're assuming that that money has to be spent somewhere else. And so when you get that elasticity in that budgeting, I think it prevents us from either being able to program those numbers or to be able to return those numbers back to the budget, you know, and not spend them in the first place.
And I would agree with that. And I'm really looking forward to, hoping that he will bring, as Jim Schmidt has said us several times, strategic budgeting or planning. And I think that'll get our budget numbers better. So we, we aren't looking at what our budget is for next year. We're looking at what our budget's going to be for the next five, 10 years, where we're going to be. So hopefully we'll get that plan and it'll all work out for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Does anybody from the board have any other questions?
Sherri, I just want to tell you, thank you for what you've done. I think that given the challenges that we have with growth and the other things which, you know, we just heard from our judge on expenditures, that we're able to take care of our immediate needs with what we've done and without any extra infusion of cash from opt outs or anything like that. So I think that's something the public should be aware of. I think we've done, we've done a good job in managing our funds and our expenses.
Commissioner, I could not agree more that our staff has done a good job at keeping the taxpayers' money, you know, in line with our ability to pay for that. It's always been a juggling to understand the cash supply in reference to what actually does that happen. The, not trying to be devil's advocate, but there are some things unique to our county of the growth, just like we just heard from Dave Stewart last week, your honor, this Rasmussen today. There are things that are going to be coming that are going to be shockers and they're not going to be cheap. And that's the reality of what this county is becoming. You know, from the days when I was first elected back in 2002 and maybe we were 20,000 people at most at that time to probably close to 70,000 people now. And everything indicates it's going to keep growing substantially. We definitely need to be aware and be implementing long-term planning as we've heard and attempted many times here. So again, I thank you. I do want to ask the audience if there's anybody that has a question or a comment. If this is a 45,000 level, look at our budget currently, but if there is anybody who wants to make a comment, you're more than welcome to.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Yes. Sherri, what were those dates again that you mentioned at the beginning? I know July 15th and concerning an opt out, but what were the other two days?
So, yep, July 15th is the opt out. September 5th, I'd like to have the, we have to have a hearing for the budget and then we have to have it passed before the end of September.
Okay. Thank you.
Sherri, if there is such a, you know, if we're looking good with this cash applied and that number of actual versus estimated, are we really looking at needing to have an opt out this year for anything anyway?
That's really an answer for you guys, or a question for you guys, but I would have to say, if it's not this year, I, probably not.
Thank you.
But we do have other expenditures coming up. Now we're going to have a new building and other things that we're going to have to look at. So we're going to have to be aware of that in the next few budgets, but.
For clarification, Madam Auditor, if a county did, does pass an opt out, are they required to actually take that money and implement it into the budget or can that be taken only as needed?
Yes, they can take it as needed.
So it would create a safety net if something does arise.
Minion County has done that several times. You know, Commissioner Aaron's, I think one of the things that it's going to probably look at, I don't know about a general opt out, but I think our roads and our bridges are going to be something that we have to look at with the increased population that Commissioner Poppins has mentioned. And roads aren't cheap and I know our highway department looks at that. So that may be something we have to look at. But on the other hand, to the general public, if you do have an opt out and you opt out for something specific like roads and bridges, they can actually see that being applied to the overall county situation, better for economic development, better roads. to the overall county situation, better for economic development, better roads, farm-to-market roads and things like that. So I think that's one of the things that we'll be looking at, from my vantage point anyway.
Well, and I, Commissioner Schmidt, my hope is, is that we engage in any strategic planning before considering the opt-out.
Oh, of course.
Because normal, I don't, we don't have enough time between now and July 15th to do the kind of analysis and planning that it would take for this year for roads and bridges. So if there is any kind of need for roads and bridges, I would hope that it's part of a deliberate and transparent effort in the run-up perhaps to next 5th, next July 15th.
I would, I would say, Commissioner, I'm not talking about this year. I'm talking about, you know, you just look down the road to '25, '26. That's the areas that, you know, when we do some analysis finally and we get ourselves into some strategic looking at what it is and the age of roads, it may be two or three years down the road before we make that decision.
Yeah, because I think like last year, there was a million dollars left over that could have been used and didn't get done.
Well, when you say that there's a million dollars left over, that just means maybe the bills haven't came in yet.
Well, I thought we were told that there was the million dollars left over, that the bills didn't come, there was no bill to come in, that we actually had a million dollars that...
Are you talking about the road and bridge fund?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about overall, that could have been programmed towards the roads and bridges. Like, for example, if we had tighter budgeting numbers, we could have programmed those numbers in. Because if we would have had like monthly budget analysis going on, we would have known, what is it, more than six months out that we had the million dollars to be able to apply towards other areas of the budget? In this instance, I'm suggesting that had we done that, we could have applied that towards roads and bridges, had we been doing that monthly close analysis, right? I think that was part of the discussion we had, right?
It's always a balancing act in a budget. You can balance any budget. It's just a matter of the services in which you're going to provide with the funds available. So we, could we continue to strip highway down to the bare bones as we've typically have done to make the balanced budget and then pay the price later, which we have roads that are unfortunately becoming beaten by traffic? And, you know, somewhere, it's going to have to get paid. I too, and when I initially look at this at the 45,000 level, I don't see that there's going to be an imminent, imminent need for an opt-out by any means. But I do see that as you start to strategically plan for five years out, somewhere, there's going to be a continued discussion about how do you pay for it versus the services that you provide.
And hopefully, that we'll be able to not have a winter, you know, where you have continual buzzards and you got to pile the roads and you got all kinds of things. Those are those wild cards that you got to deal with as well.
With, with that, I'm going to end the discussion on budgets.
But wait, there's more.
There's more?
What did you guys want to do? Well, what did you want to do about getting together with the department heads? Did you want to go out and do that on your own? How do you want to do it between now and then?
I'm going to choose to go on my own, because unfortunately, I received word that I'll be out of the area next week. I know there had been discussion of trying to get together on next Tuesday evening, wasn't it, to hold a hearing? Unfortunately, I'll be out, so I hope to visit, or I will visit with each department head and go through it individually. But I would hope that the rest of the commission would be able to get together with the public as well, so...
So what if we were to take this out a couple more weeks and then have public work sessions like we have in the previous with department heads, if you need to?
Is there any thoughts, Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm supportive of bringing them in, so that way the public can understand. And then according to our rules, the public gets to, you know, make comments and ask questions, so...
Do you want to continue with next Tuesday evening?
We, since we're kind of in agreements that there is not a need for an opt-out, we don't, I don't think we need to push it as heavy as we thought we had to.
Okay, no.
So if we wanted to, you guys can think about it, do your schedules, kind of look what works for everybody.
Then it, to be determined.
Yes.
All right, very clear.
So are you thinking kind of just for the next 30, 60, 90 here? We're kind of maybe thinking we bring the department heads in late July or August? Would that be?
Yeah.
Or is that too late?
I think earlier is better.
Well, I think if we work through it in July, like we have before, you know, if you put them at the end of every commission meeting, then it's not all at once. Or if you want to do one night, I don't, whatever you guys want to do. It's just, we don't have a rush if we're not thinking opt-out, so...
When we're not doing the commission meeting on the week of the 4th, we have one scheduled for the 11th. Would we substitute the Tuesday on the 18th for a session? Could we do that?
We can do that.
And have our department heads come in, and that would be the only item on our agenda?
You have a budget work session on the 18th?
Yeah. Would that work for you?
I'm in a trial. I scheduled that deliberately because we don't have meetings.
How about, how about the 18th evening?
Well, I'm out of town.
Okay, that's off.
My trial's 18th and 19th.
Very good.
How about the 20th?
Would be available on 20th.
Commissioner Gibbon, would you be available on the 20th?
Of July?
Yep.
Do you want to do it day or night, or?
Day.
Yep, that's for me.
All right. Commissioner Gibbon, day?
On the 20th?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I can, I'll, I'll make that.
You have three to do it on the day of the 20th. Is there a part three, Madam Honor?
No.
I'll end the discussion on the budget for today and open it up for public comment, anything not on the agenda. And again, name and address, please, for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Linda Montgomery from Ferris, South Dakota.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have two things on my mind. Last week during public comment, citizens were not allowed to hand you or provide documentation that they had on hand. I went to the Commissioner's public comment policy for public comment, and on number eight, they give no notice for 24 hours, that it's needed during public comment. The week before, Auditor Lung did step aside, because I didn't realize it was in the 24, but it's for regular business, not for public comment. On the, it's not anywhere in the rules. So that's, maybe we can have you guys address that and make sure it doesn't happen again. The other thing that I have again is cast vote records. We have not, they have not been released to us yet. And so we are continuing to not be able to audit and to prove that our tabulator machines are correct. I know we all want to say it's correct, the end of story. But at some point, we have to prove their correctness, and that's why I'm looking at cast vote records. What I propose, if it continues that we are not able, now, this is, I'm speaking for myself, not for any group, not for anything else. But if we are not able to prove the tabulator is correct with the cast vote records, then I believe we need to do an audit of the hand counts of a race. And then we can compare that to the tabulator results. We have to do something so that we can, again, have faith. And I'm not saying anything to Ferris. I just want proof that our count is correct. And, you know, and it might prepare us for the 2024 election if we end up not using the tabulators because we can't prove them correct, because we are not allowed to audit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we're, any executive session needed? Thank you.
I got a comment.
We have a comment from Commissioner Schrempf.
Last week, I attended the indigent care meeting down, that the state has on their summer study to look at how possibly the state can assist counties in helping to pay for some of that, what our judge was talking about, indigent care. It was a session, there were several, we had the state's attorney from Clay County, we had several commissioners from Yankton County, from Clay County, and Yankton County were there. They took the testimony on what the expense was to various counties and some ideas. There was a very long discussion on the part of individual attorneys that do act in the public defender category as part of their particular business model. So all of that material will be tabulated, will be presented to the, at a public meeting here in Pierre, I think on June 24th. And then there will be looked at as possible legislation, maybe on the part of this legislature. But not to be a downer, but the head of the appropriations committee, Betty Helpme, who is the gal from, she's a senator from Yankton County?
Jean Hahnoff.
Jean Hahnoff was there and thanked us for all of us being there and said she learned a great deal and that she understood our situation. And she concluded by saying, but next year will be a difficult budget year, so don't get your hopes up, counties. Anyway, that was kind of the gist of this whole thing. So anyway, it is, I think one of the things that we went away with, we meaning county commissioners that were there, was that I do think that our state legislature understands the county situation, the budgets that we have to deal with, the lack of revenue on certain areas. So at some point in time, we will make progress and something will happen, and I'm optimistic about that. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, just two quick things. So my apologies to everyone this morning for being late. I was caught in some road construction coming down 115. And what I saw while waiting for the pilot car was a little concerning. It was a number of people at 8:00 AM who want to just drive right past the pilot, the guy standing out there with the flag, because they didn't know what they were waiting for. And there were multiple vehicles trying to do that. And I understand people want to get to work, but they're impatient. And there's two seasons in South Dakota. One is winter and the other's road construction. And I just encourage people to, we're in the middle of road construction season here. Let's be safe. These are your friends and neighbors who work these jobs. And so be very careful out there. The second thing I want to do, so I appreciate everybody's patience this morning. Second thing I want to talk about, though, is what Commissioner Schmidt brought up, is this issue of funding for counties. It doesn't look like the legislature is going to approve new revenue sources. So at this point, do we, how do we, how do we figure this out? How do we skin the cat? And I think that's a difficult thing that we have to figure out. What I am concerned about here, Commissioner Schmidt, is the impact that alcohol use has on our budget, illegal, improper alcohol use. We had 360 DUI convictions in 2022 in this county, and we get a very small percentage of the amount of money that somebody pays in a fine. Most of the fines and fees do not go to the county. Yet the county is primarily responsible for prosecuting, defending, and enforcing. Now, there are other agencies who also enforce DUI law. You have State Patrol, you have the, here in Lincoln County, you have the municipalities such as the City of Sioux Falls Police Department, Chancellor, or excuse me, not Chancellor, Worthing, Lennox, T., et cetera, who may not be serviced by the, whose municipalities have their own police departments. However, you know, I went through the numbers with our state's attorney's office on this, and there's a substantial amount of time, just from a law enforcement perspective, not from the state's attorney or from the public defender, that goes into prosecuting DUIs. And so my hope is, or my hope is, is that we can get our legislature to approve an increase or some kind of extra fee that goes on to DUIs in order to compensate counties for the work that we do. You know, unfortunately, here in South Dakota, there's a, I don't know if I should say unfortunately, but the reality is, there's a constitutional provision in South Dakota that provides that this money is supposed to go to school districts. Yet school districts don't have anything to do other than teaching our kids morals and values and those kinds of things. They don't prosecute DUI. They don't defend it. They don't jail those people. They have nothing to do with it. Yet our state constitution says that's where most of the money from a DUI fee and fine should go to. And it's just backwards. It's backwards. It's hurting counties and it's hurting our county budget, because these people want to go on our roads and drink and drive, and yet we have no way of being able to take care of it. So to your point, Commissioner Schmidt, there was an excellent presentation made by Greg Sazitson, I think I'm saying his name correctly, who is the UJS Administrative Director. And he gave an excellent presentation on the breakdown of where, when somebody gets fines and fees, where the money actually goes to. And so I encourage people to go to the, to the LRC website and under the county summer study section, and it actually shows where that money goes to. And so my hope is we can get our legislators to, to see the wisdom in directing more money towards alcohol prevention issues and DUI issues, because just like Judge Rasmussen said, it's one of the big issues that's driving this increase here in Lincoln County, so...
You know, Commissioner, I think that is something, you bring up an excellent point. I think we should have that presentation or take time to make that presentation to let the public really see what you have just reiterated very thoroughly. So I don't know if we can ever get that or put that on the big screen, which we should do. So I think the public should be well aware of what you just reiterated.
Any further comments? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Sheri?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thanks, everyone, for attending.